And we'll roll right into committee of the whole meeting for October fourteenth. It's quarter to eleven. Approval agenda.
Resolved that the agenda for the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved as presented.
Move over in second or please. Deputy Warden Ketschba. The Council Shiger. All in favor? Motion carries. Adoption of the minutes.
Resolves that the minutes of the meeting held on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five be adopted.
Over in second or please. Counselor Sloan. Counselor Hans. All in favor? Motion carries. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Not seeing any, any members' motions. Seeing none, down to reports. First, six point one, Director of Engineering Services, Asset Management Plan, Levels of Service. Welcome, Peter, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of County Council. At Council's last meeting, the county's consultant presented an asset management overview, and also identified next steps required to meet the county's obligations as set in Ontario Regulation five eighty-seven. This report continues to advance the county's asset management efforts and presents council with a proposed level of service framework. This, combined with operational elements, provides council with a comprehensive, data-driven decision-making framework to assist in guiding investment decisions. The county provides a number of services, and many of them have assets. And those assets are included within the county's asset management plan. They include transportation assets, stormwater, bridges and culverts, fleet, wastewater, information technology, and finally, long-term care. When we speak to long-term care, we're talking about the equipment with, within the long-term care facilities. The levels of service have been developed for each of these asset categories so that their condition is maintained at a performance level that is expected by users, adheres to regulations, accommodates anticipated future growth, are tangible and are measurable. Staff has reviewed the regulatory obligations, as well as asset management plans from the county's LMPs and neighboring municipalities to develop a list of draft Level of Service framework that are mandated and technically focused. This list of thirty-five or thirty-three objectives is located on, starting on page twenty-six of your agenda package. Currently, some of the performance and proposed level of service targets are currently being collected and developed. Council can also set additional Level of Service objectives at any time. Recommendations for continuous improvement, including the frequency of the review, will form part of the final plan. Currently, staff will be recommending that the information set forth in those Level of Service metrics and objectives be reviewed annually by staff, and the metrics could be updated, and that County Council would receive a fulsome opportunity to revisit those Level of Service obligations, or sorry, objectives, every four years. Did the, the development of the proposed Levels of Service coincides with the review of the asset inventories developed in two thousand and twenty-two, which were the county's core assets, and in two thousand and twenty-four, which were the non-core assets? This review confirmed that the majority of the county's infrastructure is considered to be in fair or better condition, with an overall replacement value of one point five billion dollars. This update of the current state of infrastructure and the development of the proposed Levels of Service objectives creates a baseline approach to inform the development of an asset management strategy. Life-cycle investment strategies will include recommended interventions to support the performance of these assets to the desired levels of service established. Next steps will be to finalize the asset management strategy and develop a resulting financial strategy. And this will approximate the investments required for the operations and maintenance work, the capital work, and also account for anticipated future growth. The Asset Management Plan update is scheduled to be completed by the end of this year. I would be pleased to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Huge undertaking. Congratulations so far. Questions, Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Peter, just a couple of questions. Eighty percent, to me, look like they're good or very good. Couple of questions. Number one, when are the TBDs going to be reported back to council?
Thank you for that question through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan. The, the fulsome, complete, final asset management plan will be developed and completed by year's end, so as we continue to collect metrics in, in those categories, they will be included in the plan, so we expect to have all that data before year's end. Now, I, I will preface that comment with there are a number of unknown assets, unknown conditions of assets, and typically, these are underground assets. Throughout the development of the asset management plan, which has started well before we formalize this, we continue to embark upon fully understand what we have under the ground, and we're currently, currently utilizing age as an approximator for their condition, and that's serving us well so far, however, without cammering all of the underground infrastructure, we don't have a, a definite condition rating on many of them, so there will still be some assumptions made in the final plan.
Perfect. Thanks, Peter. Just a follow-up. Will you provide any financial modeling for the council?
Through you, Mr. Warden. That is the goal of this plan, is once we develop the financial strategies, and that's fully understanding what we have in the condition there, and measuring that against the levels of service, then we can develop investment models to, for each asset category on, on when is the most appropriate intervention or, or activity required. And then, once we understand that, utilizing current union, unit rates, we can measure that against the proposed capital plan.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. One, one concern I have is when I see ninety to a hundred percent level of service. Like, if we're at a hundred percent level of service, is that not a brand-new item? So like, when we, you come to council quite often and tell us about the new roads, but the next day, that road is not a hundred percent. Like, ideally, when it's brand-new, it's a hundred percent, but when I see level of service for facilities and IT at, at basically a hundred percent, I don't know how we can financially achieve that. Like, money-wise, and even libraries are at, like, ninety percent. When we look at Level of Service, yeah, ideally, it'd be nice to have everything at a hundred percent, but financially, I don't know how we, we, we finance that. That's my question, is the financing, and seeing things at a hundred percent, it kind of is a concern to me.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. The intention of establishing these Level of Service metrics was purposely to have some flexibility and some realism in establishing these. So where you do see a hundred percent, and I'll just take the first one, in, in the table of thirty-three in total, it is for the percent of facilities in fair or better condition. So we're not necessarily looking for assets that are perfect, one hundred percent condition. We're saying, how many of our assets are fair or better? And in that case, we want the target to be one hundred percent, because we've already established the criteria of, of that basket of items we want it in, just the fair or better condition. And as I've mentioned in the report, generally, all of our assets fall within that category, or fair or better. We think that's an appropriate level to be. As mentioned, it's very expensive to maintain a higher level of service than that, and it, it can be a very slippery slope if you let the condition of assets fall below that area. Interventions to maintain that level of service are lesser expensive. They're more frequent if you allow assets to fail, which we do in some cases for different reasons. It's very expensive to bring that, renew that asset completely and bring it back up to, to a, a good level of service. So there are other instances also within the objectives categories where it's referred to regulations. And if a regulation is referred to, the target is always a hundred percent. Our goal is to meet the regulatory framework, for example, of minimum maintenance standards on roadways. So in those cases, we do want to strive for a hundred percent target.
Through you, Warden. Just for clarification, so on page twenty-six, that, where it says a hundred percent, you're saying a hundred percent of eighty-five percent?
It can, it can be looked at that, but i- for instance, if the one in fair or better condition, if you say that's maybe between seventy and eighty percent, yes, we're targeting that a hundred percent of our assets fall within that eight, seventy to eighty percent performance rating.
And in the same manner, as assets get older, do they depreciate? And this, when we're re, putting money away to fix them, or rebuild them, or replace them. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Warden. The, the investment strategy that will form part of the report that council will see will actually show deterioration models of typical, typical assets. Roads, for example, because roads have a very long life cycle, and the interventions that are applied to roads to keep them in good condition vary from cracked ceiling, which would be sort of early-on stages of, of the asset's life, to resurfacing, to finally rehabilitation and replacement. So the, the asset management report will detail models showing where those, the scope of what type of activity and the timing of that activity should be invested in, in order to maintain that asset's condition in good condition. And those financials, the investment strategies, and they obviously tie directly to the financial modeling, that will all help inform the county's capital plan.
Are there questions for Peter? Counselor Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter. Peter, on page fifteen, the pie chart that you have in there is very informative, but it's a lot of big numbers for some small articles, so like, unknown is twenty-two million, very poor, six point nine. I mean, that shows the importance of having reserves and shows the importance of having these reports done, because if, if we had no idea, it would certainly be a shock. It's still a shock, but at least you know it's out there, so thank you for your report.
Any other questions for Peter? Counselor Shiger?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. So if I understand this correctly, this, this is kind of an interim draft report, because there's still some TBDs. And also, what I read, and I'm referring to section three point two, where it talks about so far, the targets have, were selected based on best practice, county priorities, and comparable municipalities. And then it's, but they will be, so, so it feels like there's going to be a second iterations. They will be aligned eventually with operational goals, community priorities, and financial realities. So, so I wanted to confirm, so this is like an interim step? There's a, a second version? So the purpose for today in, for council, this is just information, just so you're letting us know kind of where you're heading? But ultimately, am I to assume that then we'll receive more of a final report? That then would be the real one that would cause us to comment, because I guess my thinking is that if you, once you apply the financial realities, we may want to revisit the level of service if perhaps the target that we set was not, or is, is not financially viable. So is, is, can you clarify if that's where we're heading?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Counselor Shiger. It's an interim report in the aspect that we're developing the final asset management plan. We wanted to put the Levels of Service before council, before we start developing the financial strategies associated with these Levels of Service. I can fully appreciate that once council sees the fulsome report, you may want to go back and revisit the Levels of Service, potentially even canvassing the communities and supplementing the Levels of Service with other Levels of Service metrics or objectives that are, that are important to council. This is a living document. We don't expect it to be concluded fully at this time. We're following the roadmap set out in the regulations to ensure that we are fully compliant to, to, to continue to receive provincial and federal funding. And so we need to establish all these frameworks, and we also fully understand that council isn't going to get a full picture until the financial strategy has been fully developed. It's, it's a, a, a couple large leaps to get from this point to get to the financial strategy, and council has the opportunity to always modify that, but it's, it, it's, there's some effort involved to come back to you with a revised financial strategy. That's why the Level of Service objectives that you see before you were carefully selected to only choose the absolutely necessary ones that are part of the regulation. We don't have flexibility with the ones presented here. They are very technical in nature, and they try to broadly cover all of our asset categories without getting too far in the weeds of, of a lot, of, a lot of the Level of Service objectives that I've seen in some larger communities. City of London, City of Hamilton has pages and pages of them. Once we develop these and formulate them, and formalize them as part of the plan, we're going to have an ongoing obligation to make sure they're kept up to date. So we want to make sure that it's manageable, the list we have, to keep up to date. But we also understand that there's always going to be, it's a living document. There's flexibility. Once we develop the financial strategy, there'll always be an opportunity for council to adjust those Levels of Service if they want to reduce the potential future investment required.
So thank you for that, and so I just wanted to again make sure that, and in endorsing this today, certainly, if I were to vote to endorse this, I would not be saying that this is what I'm endorsing, because I don't know what the price tag is, and I don't know if I can afford it. So I would not want council to then say, but you did approve this target, so now we have to fund it. So do you see what I mean? So I'm hoping that the vote from the committee today would be, okay, we, we like what we see so far, or this seems, you know, to meet the minimum standards and, and all of that. But if we need, if we need to revisit, let's revisit.
Go ahead, Blaine.
Thank you, Warden Jones, and through you to members of committee, and further to Mr. Ducek's comments. My recommendation to committee is that you will continuously revisit this. As Mr. Ducek pointed out, this is a living document. So just to take a step back, to put it in, in a little context, we're in the service provision business, not in the asset ownership business. We own assets to provide services. We provide the services, some legislated, some driven by council decision. Again, with the Levels of Service that we provide, or the levels at which we provide those services, they are provided, some are legislated, some are driven by council decision. Some of those services require us to own assets. The level that those assets are maintained at directly impact the Levels of Service that we provide. So where all of this, I think, comes into sort of the bigger picture is that the financial strategy that's been discussed this morning strictly speaks to managing our current assets. And, and if you recall for a moment, members of committee have spoken to council on a couple of occasions now about the need for a long-range financial plan. Council will see that in the recommended business plan for two thousand and twenty-six. It's time that we start to turn our minds to that. What that tool provides council is, and, and Counselor Shiger, I'll, I'll borrow your analogy from last meeting when you said a, a dial. I will expand that to a control panel, because there's a few different dials that you have. In that long-range financial plan, the inputs are the directives from your asset management strategy. So basically, how you manage what you currently own. The second primarily, primary input is you have growth management plans. We're currently walking through the final phase under Mr. Ducek's leadership of, of a transportation master plan. So you have growth management plans driving the expansion of your existing asset base or the acquisition of new assets. So you've got managing your current, and then managing what you need to continue to grow the, the county in the direction that council wishes to. The third primary input is what does it take to run that? The operational element of it. The people, the other expenditures not directly related to the ownership of the assets, but more the operational of those. Those are your three primary inputs into that. Council has dials with respect to each of those areas. You can slow down growth, therefore, we don't need to expand our asset base or acquire new ones as fast. You can tell us to, we're okay with a lower service level with our roads or our facilities, therefore, we can turn down the level of investment there. So those three primary inputs all go into your long-range financial plan. The other information in there is how do you fund it? So all your funding sources are captured in there as well, whether they be taxation, or anticipated grants, or development charges, or anything of that nature goes in there to try to balance the two sides of the ledger. So you've got all your inputs, and then you've got your, your funding mechanisms as well. The umbrella over all of that is what our, our consultants from Aspire referenced in the presentation at our last meeting, is how you manage risk. And Mr. Ducek referenced this briefly this morning, is as your assets age, they're more likely to fail. Makes sense. They also deteriorate at a much faster rate than what they do when they're first new, at least most assets do. So the umbrella over that is how you, as, as a council, want to manage risk in the organization and in the community. That drives a lot of that decision-making, okay? One of the things that Mr. Loeb and I have discussed, and one of his projects on the docket now, is to start to build a more enterprise risk management tool to come and talk to council, is to how you want to manage risk, because that provides us with some insight that we can bring to council that's at least aligned with your thought process. Notwithstanding, you still have those final decisions. So I recognize that's a lot of information. This is one of those primary inputs. So back to your original question, Counselor Shiger, this is something that you will continuously look at and revise as we go, because the, the world could be a different place a year or two from now. We could be facing much different financial challenges a year or two from now. And therefore, maybe it's acceptable to manage that risk in a different way, and therefore, fund those assets a little lower. So this is something that we will constantly be revisiting with a lot of our decision-making, a lot of our analysis that we're providing to council is all driven by these various inputs. I hope that clarifies things and not muddies things, but.
Deputy Warden?
Now, thank you, Mr. Warden, and Blaine, thank you very much for that comprehensive explanation. There is one dial that you haven't identified yet, and that the ultimate financial plan will also include time. How you're going to define that plan. Is that plan going to be over ten years, fifteen years, twenty years? That's something council will have to decide, and that builds itself into the affordability factor. So just keep that in mind. Information's still coming, but this is a requirement. So let's get it right.
Counselor Sloan?
Thank you, Warden Jones, and through you. So if I'm, and, and we're mandated by the government to do this every five years? Okay, and then to, between the five years, there's nothing that goes to the government. It's a plan that's given to them every five years. We've got many dials. As to the deputy Warden's comment about time, we can change that dial to the Counselor Shiger's comment about us sort of giving this the, the seal of approval as you, you, you would. This is not ultimately a finalized document. We're going to have the opportunity to change dials. And, and I think that was the answer to the question that was, was posed. Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor Sloan. And with respect to the, the requirement, you know, the, the provincial requirement with submissions, my, my own personal opinion is that this is the right way to manage what you own. Whether the province requires us to submit something, this is prudent management of what you own. And by extension, this is prudent management of the services that you, council wishes to provide to our community. So the, the submission to the province is, is a requirement, yes. We'd like to get to the point where we're, we're revisiting this with council, to a certain degree anyways, on an annual basis. This should actually form part of our discussions when we're talking to council about our annual business planning for the, for the following year. This should actually form part of those discussions, as will the long-range financial plan, so that council is fully aware as to where we're sitting with respect to our financial planning, our asset management. That should be done on an annual basis.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. I think at the end of the day, our, our worry with picking the Level of Service is not knowing how that will affect the bottom line and the cost to the taxpayer. So when we're determining how we're going to pick the Level of Service without knowing what the actual cost is, it's, it's kind of like shopping without a price tag on anything. It's a little bit scary.
Through you, Warden. Yes, absolutely, Counselor Noble, and that's one of the things that, as we go through the next, I'm, I'm going to say about year or so, as all of those various pieces of the puzzle come together, the ultimate goal is to get you to a, a more, much more comfortable place, because you'll both be more fully informed with respect to the balance between services and service levels and the cost of those. I mean, right now, we're still putting the pieces of the puzzle together, so I completely recognize and respect the fact that some of it's still written in pencil, if you will. Ultimately, it will be written in pen.
As, I think we all know, we, we shouldn't be running this as a municipality, more it should be run as a business, and a lot of other counties and lower tiers have not taken that approach, and now they find themselves in a spot where they're scrambling, well, at least we have the luxury, we aren't scrambling, and we have time to make decisions and make good, prudent decisions for the future. Anything further for Peter? If not, we have resolution.
Resolved that the report titled Asset Management Plan Levels of Service from the Director of Engineering Services dated October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five be received and filed, and that the Levels of Service presented be included as part of the county's asset management plan to guide asset investment planning decisions.
Move over in second or please. Counselor Whitner, Counselor Hans, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have Jeff Brooks. Come on up, Jeff. Manager of Emergency Management, Emergency Evacuation Site for King's Academy. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good morning. We were approached by King's Academy, which is a school that's just across the street here. As they're developing their emergency plan, they require a location for evacuation in the event that they have to immediately clear their school of students and staff. So they approached us to see if they could utilize this facility in the interim to do that. What we're talking about are events like a fire or a bomb threat, where things have to be evacuated immediately. And the need would only be to have students and staff here while parents are notified to come and pick them up. So it's just an interim location. Anything related to power outages and those kind of things wouldn't require the facility to be immediately evacuated. So the incidences where this would happen are, hopefully, fairly infrequent. We're looking at around eighty students, up to around twenty-five staff, although not all staff are present every day, so the numbers, that's like worst-case scenario numbers. And that's a, sort of what, what their ask is. From an emergency management perspective, it certainly makes sense. This facility is in a good location for them. It provides them with some safety and some housing and some security. They also have a couple students that have mobility issues, and this facility also is able to, to handle that with the, the elevators and the systems we have in place to allow them to access the facility and be safe until they can be, be picked up. So happy to answer any questions.
Read the resolution, please.
Resolved that council accepts the recommendation to allow King's Academy to designate the County of Elgin Administration Building as an emergency evacuation site for their students and staff, and that council directs staff to develop a letter of understanding between King's Academy and the County of Elgin outlining the roles and responsibilities of each party.
Move over in second or please. Counselor Latham, Counselor Hans? Counsel Latham, Counsel Hance, questions for Jeff. Counsel Slone.
Thanks for the Warden to Mr. Brooks. Where do you plan on putting the hundred people when they come, please?
Thanks through you, Mr. Warden. We had staff from King's College come and, or King's Academy come and do a look at the site here. The room downstairs, sort of right below here, and the two rooms that are off that, they feel would be more than sufficient for their needs. As parents come, some of those students will be brought up in groups to the front area where they can be picked up by their parents, so.
Thank you. Supplementary, the basement's accessible for the handicap, or sorry, the people that have special needs?
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. It is through the elevator at the front of the building, there's direct access down to that area, and they have full access to that, to that area.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing no further questions, call vote, all in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Jeff. Down to manager of economic development, tourism strategy, and strategic initiatives for Stanley Visitor Center. Welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to county council. Since 2018, the county has leased space from the municipality of Central Elgin at one nine ninety-nine Carlo Road in Port Stanley to operate our seasonal visitor and tourism information center. So this location offers a highly visible and accessible presence in one of Elgin County's busiest tourism destinations, serving visitors from May through September with the support from summer students and county staff. The original five-year lease expired in May of 2023, and following ongoing discussions with Central Elgin, a new ten-year lease agreement has been proposed. So the updated lease maintains the same footprint and sets the annual cost at four thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars plus HST with yearly increases tied to the consumer price index. And staff recommend that we continue this arrangement with the municipality of Central Elgin to ensure that we can continue service at this key tourism destination in the county. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Resolution, please.
Resolved that the chief administrative officer be directed to sign the lease agreement between the corporation of the County of Elgin and the municipality of Central Elgin for the purposes of operating a tourism information center at one ninety-nine Carlo Road, Port Stanley, for the term of June first, twenty twenty-three to May thirty-first, twenty thirty-three, at a cost of four thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-nine cents plus HST annually, subject to annual CPI increases according to the terms and conditions described in this report.
Move her in second, please. Counsel Noble, Counsel Slone, any questions or concerns? Counsel Giger.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I was just curious what the current lease was, or the prior to, up to twenty twenty-three? We know?
To clarify, the monthly, or the yearly lease, it was four thousand something. I would have to take a look to get the exact number, but it was very close to this one.
And that's all, thank you for that through you, Mr. Warden. That's all I was trying to gauge was how much of an increase are we looking at? And it sounds minimal. Yeah, thank you.
Anything further? All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, Carolyn. And down to directors of home and senior services, registered dietitian services at Elgin County Homes.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. This report provides details on the request for proposal for the registered dietitian services across our three homes. The current contract for the registered dietitian services is expiring, and a new RFP was issued. The relevant documents are attached in this report. A registered dietitian to oversee our nutrition and hydration programs for our homes is a requirement under the legislation and a necessity for the provision of resident-centered care. As outlined in the report, and subsequently, the proposal submission from, oh, sorry, the evaluation committee completed an evaluation and selection process, and has subsequently the proposed submission from Herb Shop Folds Dietetics Professional Corporation was deemed a successful qualified proponent and is recommended for award. And the recommendations there before you, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Resolution, please.
Resolved that the contract for registered dietitian services at Elgin County Homes be awarded to Herb Shop Folds Dietetics Professional Corporation for a three-year term, and that staff be authorized to extend the contract for an additional two-year term in accordance with section seven point six of the procurement policy, subject to satisfactory performance during the initial three-year contract term, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the contract.
Move her in second, please. Counsel Whitner, Counsel Slone, any questions for Michelle? Counsel Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Through you to Michelle. This is the current service provider now, I believe, is it? And we've had good luck, so.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. I think we're down to adjournment.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at eleven nineteen AM to meet again on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five at nine thirty AM.
Move her in second, please. Counsel Whitner, Deputy Warden Ketschba, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all.